It looks like the meeting has started, but the room is on mute still.
Lauren, try unmuting your microphone.
Okay. Wait, can you still hear us?
Yep.
Okay, good. I'm muted, but Angeles has figured it out. I apologize. We just did roll call of the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Back to end. Thank you so much. Back to agenda item number four, very important to me. I don't believe we're gonna have any today, but I always just want to recognize the public, being a member of the public myself at many town meetings. I want to recognize that there may be times when we'd like to get right down to business, but it's important that we keep our, and this was pointed out last night at the RTM meeting, that we keep the public included in this conversation, so that everybody feels. At this time, if there's any members of the public that wish to speak, please do so. Okay, I'm indicating there's none. So I'd like to go ahead and move on to item number five on our agenda, to consider an act on electing a committee vice chair. Since there's only four of us, and two of us are already spoken for, and Jeff, I know that you'll be only with us for a brief time. John, is there any interest? I just want to throw this out there. Is there any interest in being vice chair of the committee?
Might be tough for me. Over the next six months, I have a lot of travel. Like, I'm calling in from Prague, Czechoslovakia.
On your stand.
Czech Republic right now.
Okay. Well, that's fine. Hopefully, we will find someone. Otherwise, in the event of my being absent, Nicole would be, our secretary, would be the one in charge of running the meetings. Of course, I'm completely comfortable with that. I just think it might be nice to also have a third person amongst our roster who would be willing to step in. Yes, Jeff?
I just absolutely agree. You want somebody as a backup, but Robert rules does, does say that you can have a meeting in the absence of all the officers. And whoever, if you have a quorum of the remaining members, they can elect a, a chair for the meeting. So it is certainly possible to have a meeting, although I don't know that you want to under those conditions.
Okay. Thank you for that bit of knowledge. I appreciate it. I'm also looking at my computer instead of the cameras. I apologize if it looks like I'm looking down.
I'm terrible with all the names of everybody so far on the committee. The woman who's already been on other committees, Peggy, I believe she's the one who's absent today.
Today.
Perhaps it's a conversation to be had in private with her.
Hi, Dina!
I am in the right spot.
You are in.
Sorry, I am late.
All good. Joining us now, another member of our committee, could you just introduce yourself?
Hi, Dina Palizo.
Hi, Dina. Thank you for joining us. All good, all good.
Does she want to be vice chair?
I agree. I know, which is why I didn't miss the meeting. Okay.
It's okay.
So we're still looking for a possible third option. I was just covering that in the event of my absence, Nicole, as our secretary, would be the one, in the absence of a chair, to run the meetings, but it would always be great to have a third option available. But then Mr. Peterson helpfully pointed out that we could actually, the absence of all committee chairs, still technically run a meeting as long as we have a quorum, which is four out of the seven of us. So we'll see. Okay, for now, I will move ahead and perhaps come back to this. I don't want to completely table it, maybe as we move along and. Peggy. Or Peggy. Or Joe is our other member who we have not yet seen in person yet. So we'll see. Okay. Moving on for now to agenda item number six, to hear discuss last night, October 27th, RTM resolution appropriating funding for the Timothy Dwight Elementary School Replacement and Early Childhood Center project. I'm gonna call on Angeles Papa George, our head of facilities, to give us an update.
You were there.
I know, I was there.
Very happy to report that the RTM voted unanimously to approve the budget for the Dwight project. So you are a fully funded building committee at this point. Very happy and very pleased it made it to that point.
There was some last minute deliberations, some concern about process. If, you know, if you're not aware, the RTM was not posted in their backup initially in their October 20th meeting, when it was first on their agenda. They were not given the full Spiegel's report, which they felt was an oversight, even though it has been in the public sphere since August 28th. I myself was able to find it. But, and there's been multiple other meetings, Board of Ed, Board of Finance, twice. And this, I think Dina Ryder, who's Dwight's Board of Ed chair, pointed out that she had, herself and I have as well, seen the presentation at least four times, including last night. So I'm glad that everyone is informed, and it was a healthy debate. And as Mr. Peterson, you know, mentioned, it's good for people to feel engaged and to question, you know, this decision so that they feel good in their judgment. And I think at the, at the end of the day, as Mrs. Jacobson would say, it, it was clear that the right path forward, and I'm not, I'm not just saying this as a Dwight parent, but fiscally for this town was not to delay any further. It had been delayed long enough, and that's what has brought us to this point and this $76 million bonding. But let's move forward. Let's, I do, I do want to just echo the concerns of several members of the RTM. We want to be as fiscally responsible and as fiscally conservative as possible. This is taxpayer money that we are spending, and this is a big project. I want it to be one that everybody can be proud of. And, and say, yeah, I've, we have that great new school in Greenfield Hill, in Fairfield, and it will only raise everybody's property values, hopefully. And be a lasting legacy for our town. Okay. Moving on to number seven, this was important to me. I wanted for everyone to have the opportunity to see what an owner's rep document looks like. I myself am not familiar, maybe some of you are, but I, I asked Angeles if he could pull and provide for us in the backup. It should be posted. I know you all received an email for Mill Hill Building Committee, Owners Rep, and HVAC Indoor Air Quality Building Committee. I have, for me, the HVAC. And I, if Angeles, if you wouldn't mind kind of walking us through it, I know it's a lot of legal jargon, I understand, but just so that we're familiar with this, because this is our next point of order. This is correct?
It is. So what I will, what I will start with, and I'm gonna ask Adam and Lee to step in, but just to give you a brief introductory is, first thing you need to do is get an owner's rep on board. They will help move the process and keep you guys in line with not only the state filings, but town, everything we need to do moving forwards. That being said, I know there was some concern when we spoke the other night about writing the RFP, and I know, I think your mind was put at ease when I explained that we have professionals, Adam and Lee, in-house, who will do this, the lifting and the heavy lifting with the RFPs. Your, your role as the building committee is to give scope and review, to make sure that they're capturing everything. You might have an idea that you want to see in there, so you would work with them directly and get that into the scope of the RFP. But they do this every day, the language, they, this is what they do, this is why they're here, to help and.
It's like lawyer language.
It's like lawyer language, which, which I'm, I, I know and understand can be done. I guess my question, based on that, is where are they pulling the, the language from? Is this from the Spiegel, the charge for the Spiegel's report? Is this from the, the, the charge that was obviously issued for this project?
I will say, I believe they're pulling it from past experiences that they've used, but I will let Adam and Lee, who are in the process of getting it together for you guys now, talk.
Okay. Adam, could you walk us through how you are crafting the owner's rep documents for this project?
Yes, hi. Thank you for having me. I'm Adam Toulon, Director of Purchasing, and Lee Flaherty from my team is there as well. She's Assistant Director of Purchasing. So for starters, what we've done is pulled our most recent RFP for these services, which was the, having to do with the Board of Ed HVAC IACU project. We put this RFP out in 2023. And, you know, we, since we put this out, we've actually recently created a new, or we've rolled out a new e-bidding. Sorry, I don't know what's going on with my voice. I apologize. We've put out, we, we've rolled out a new e-bidding platform, which has really helped streamline our, our bidding and RFP process. So really, all we're gonna need to do from here is, is settle on a, a scope of work, you know, what, what are we looking for in an owner's rep, or sort of the official term, program management oversight? And then we will put that into, you know, a one, two, three, however, however long or short the document is, and then we will upload it into our, our bidding platform, and it'll get released out to, to vendors. This is a little bit of a broad view for now, but I guess quick basics, an RFP or a bid needs to, by charter, I believe, be out on the streets, as we call it, for two weeks. That's the minimum amount of time that a bid needs to be publicly noticed. So I, I've heard that you're optimistic to have this, obviously as soon as possible, but we're, you know, we're, we're hoping for by the, by the end of the year, start of the new year. Is that the, the rough goal?
Yes. Just, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Angeles, just in, in terms of precedent, would you typically have an owner's rep before you submit state reimbursements? Does that matter to the state?
If I may jump in?
Sal, jump in, give you a timeline and.
Okay, thanks, Sal.
Sure. Sal Morbido, Director of Construction. The, the bid process that Adam started on, yes, it is two weeks typically for something of that magnitude. There are requests for clarifications and things like that, so you're, you're basically looking for a, basically a three-week turnaround on the bid for that owner's rep. Then you and your committee will have to evaluate the bids. Adam will lead you with a scoring sheet. You know, there, there's a process to scoring the proposals that come in. It's not just, I like the color of the cover. It's, you know, there, there's something more substantive of that, and it's scored in, in the same manner. You're scoring each, each proposal on the same way. Once you select, the building committee selects it, it will need to be, a, a contract needs to be put together between using the town attorney and Adam and whichever vendor is selected. And that contract ends up being approved by the Board of Selectmen. So just generally, I, I would advise that you're looking at, for this, this segment, getting an owner's rep on board, probably a six-week window. Once they're on board, they will help with the solicitation for the architect. Again, you're looking at another six to seven week cycle to get that professional on board. That's your, that's your key in that, because you want your architect contracted and set off to do the design that they need to do. There's various steps. And for a project of this size, you're probably looking, realistically, I, I'll say a nine-month design cycle to get all the way through to construction documents. So that puts you out somewhere in October of next year, and at that time, your, your construction manager, which would already have been selected by this point, will be putting it out for bid. And that would take, there's a lot of packages, there's a lot of work to be done. They prioritize, prioritize them, obviously, for what you need first, the earthwork, the foundations, things like that. But you're looking for a couple of months of bidding going on. So what you're actually looking at is a, let's say, a shovel in the ground Christmas next year. Just, just to put.
2027.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. A project this size, going by previous experience of, say, Ludlow Middle School and those large projects in the, you know, 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago, you're, you're looking at a, a two-year construction from shovel in the ground to occupying the building. It might be a little bit more, it might be a little bit.
How often would you ever actually start, I'm sorry, am I allowed to? I don't know how this works.
Normally, the, the chair would, you would ask.
Sorry.
If you could be recognized, it's fine. Go ahead. This is Nicole.
Do you guys normally ever start excavation, as you're saying shovels in the ground, in the dead of winter? Is that how?
Sure.
Okay, they will, okay.
I wasn't sure.
Sure.
I'm curious, Sal, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt your flow, but you mentioned nine months is typical for the design process.
Sure.
That's based off of your experience, I understand, but is there any circumstance in which that design process, perhaps given that it has already been out there in the public sphere for two years, and conceptual designs have been drawn by two different firms? Is there any, you know, circumstance that you've seen where perhaps that, that can be sped along, given, given that there's already clear ad specs and a couple of different conceptual?
All right, so, and I'm, I'm speaking in broad generality, so what, what's, once, once you get your owner's rep on board, we can tighten up a timeline. Once we know who all the professionals are, there, there's gonna be an initial evaluation that comes from your, your design professional. That's going to tell you, that, they're the ones that are gonna be able to tell you best how long it will take for them to get to construction documents. And that may be one of your points of query as you're interviewing them.
Question. Given that Spiegel's and Silver Petroselli were paid for their conceptual designs, correct? So the town of Fairfield does own.
Actually, I don't know that Silver Petroselli.
Yes.
They were, okay. So the town of Fairfield then owns free and clear all conceptual designs if we were to select beyond Spiegel's or Silver Petroselli, correct?
True.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was a thing.
A public report.
I appreciate that. What you're saying could potentially speed up design, taking away, you know, how, you figure it took them two to three months each to come up with a conceptual design without any of your engineering plan, your HVAC, your E, your, yeah.
By, by, by all accounts, the pre, the pre-work that was done by these studies is, is, is important and is helpful. I'm just giving you a general, from my background, I have many years of construction experience, I'm just giving you the round picture, round numbers of what, we'll call it, an enterprise of this size and extent takes. If there, there's, there's an old saying, you always can buy the schedule.
You always can buy the life.
You always can buy a schedule.
In other words. You can pay extra and get anything done the way you want.
I understand. I just.
I mean, if you want, there, there's, not to interrupt you, there, there's always ways to shortcut to something.
I don't want to shortcut anything. I just want to acknowledge that a lot, an extensive amount of work has been done previous to us getting to this point, whereas in years past, including with HVAC, typically there would be that year-long period where a building committee would be going through this process before they then reached, you know, the, the architect point. So, yes, Jeff, would you like to contribute?
Well, yeah, just, just a couple of things. I mean, Sal, you know, would, would you say that Silver Petroselli or Spiegel's would kind of have a leg up in terms of, you know, if they're gonna bid for architectural services on us? I mean, would that cut any time off? I mean, that would kind of ask us to, you know, to jump on the designs that they've already done.
So, so here's the thing, you're, you're, you're going out to bid for an architect, and it's not pre, pre-assuming what the other person, does it, does it have a leg up? Sure, if you pick one of those people and, and said, go with Plan B that you came, or, or whatever the, the title of the plan was, yeah, they have a starting point. So would somebody unaffiliated with those designs, you can say, listen, we paid for this, we're really enamored with this, can, can you flesh this out? And they're, you're a design professional, you're hiring them to do that. They're still starting from the same point. Will it shave, you know, if you're looking to make it, let, let me put it this way, if you're looking to make it come from around nine months to five months, I, I think that's a heavy lift. If you're saying make it come from nine months to eight months, that, that's a doable lift. I, I mean, it's, it's, it's what you're asking, but I, I would temper that. I just wanted to give you an overview. This Spiegel's report put the, the middle of construction in March of 2028. To build the building, that's two years. That, if that's the middle, that puts the beginning at March of 2027, so we're already faster than that. What, what was looked at in the conceptual design?
Maybe, maybe Angeles or Jeff could shed a little light as to why that was their timing, because that's actually, to my knowledge, that timeline, as you just mentioned, Sal, was not sort of clear to me in the past four presentations from Spiegel's that I've seen. Why, why was 2028 given as the mid, the midpoint?
Well, you, when, when you're doing estimating, you, you estimate escalation, inflation to the middle of the project, half of the project. That's, that's a way to figure out escalation. So I just looked at, I, I saw that statement in, in the report. And, and nowhere in the report does, do they say that they expect it to be a two-year construction. I'm telling you that with my 40-plus years of construction experience, that it'll take you two years to build a school from the ground up.
I think, I, I do remember Marissa saying just last night that it was estimated, yeah, at least 24-month project. I'm just curious about the ti, the timing of 2027 versus.
So the, the house report uses the 2027 because they were doing estimating, and they know the state process, they know all the hoops that have to get jumped, the levels that have to get to. So they wanted to take, just, just like Sal, it's broad numbers with, with general timelines, and when you're, when you're trying to come up with an estimated price for a building, and you're trying to get to the midway point, they're gonna use worst-case scenario to put it out there. Because they, God forbid, they said that the midpoint was six months earlier, and then that would, that actually completely changes their numbers. So that's why they, they felt comfortable using that as their midway point. And as Sal has said already, the, the timelines that he's talking about are all loose, and as every step gets closer, as the owner's rep comes on board, the engineers come, all of that is where we start tightening the belt and.
And there's other layers that go on to this, Lauren. There, there's the whole state reimbursement review, that we have to go to the state with the drawings and get their permission to bid them out. So that, that is not a, we'll go, it's not a one-day or two-day affair. It takes weeks to do that, and that's part of that design period that I was talking about. You know, where your, your designer might say, I'm 95% done with my construction documents. That's great. That's not 100%, but that's good enough to get to the state for the review. And that, that could be six weeks to eight weeks before the final, final, final document that goes out on the road. So there, there's a lot to it. There's a lot of moving parts, but your, your first step on the journey is hiring the owner's rep.
So.
Who's gonna document that for you.
Back to that, and because I, I do want us to sort of get a broader understanding of what this grading process Adam will be taking us through, but real quick, I think my original question, and I do appreciate you shedding some color on, on this whole process for us, Sal, but was, does having an owner's rep have anything to do with the process of submitting for state reimbursements? I know we're up against a December 1st timeline, and I need to know, just in terms of.
Yes.
Point of order. Do we need to have that?
The short answer is yes. These are all steps that need to take place prior to even getting to that.
Prior to December 1st?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of.
The owner's rep we would want December 1st would be phenomenal. We have, so, just so you know, we've been told by the state that we will get, we will be put on the, on the floor for special legislation for this project. So that is what we are working with at this point, and I'm gonna see if I can get.
But that's our understanding.
That is our understanding. I'm gonna see, I will reach out to Ms. Lepur and see if I can get her to come in to your meeting, because she actually sits as the chair of the construction projects for the state of the matter right now. And she has made it very clear that she does a lot for a lot of districts, and that she wants to be able to serve her own district, so.
Okay. While I appreciate that, I also don't want it to necessarily appear that we are jumping the line on anybody else, right?
We're following.
So that we're following in order and.
We are following.
And doing all of our due diligence and making sure that we have everything in line before we get to that step.
Yes.
Not asking for any special favors.
We're asking for special legislation, which is a very common practice.
Okay. Okay.
It's not as special as they make it sound. So can I just?
Yes.
Just so that this is, I'm, I'm the person whose brain goes all over the place. I want to be very cut and concise, because this is kind of what I am worried about the most, is when the parents come to us, which I've already had parents talking to me, and I'm like, I don't know. Owner's rep first, six-week window on that decision. So we really want to get on the ball with that. If you're looking at December 1st, we're already behind the mark, but that's okay.
I thought he said three weeks. Sal, did you not say three-week turnaround for the owner's rep? It was the architect that was six-week turnaround.
Three-week on the owner's, after the owner's rep is selected, next step is state?
Or the selectmen for a contract.
Yeah, if I, sorry.
I, I advise not getting overly worried about, there's an arbitrary December 1 date that I'm hearing. The. You, you want to hire, your first order of business is hiring your owner's rep. It will, it'll be bid three weeks, but there's past that. You have to negotiate, you have to do contract work between the town, town attorney and the, and the vendor. Then it needs to go to the Board of Selectmen. That doesn't happen in a vacuum, and I'm sorry, there's also your evaluation. You might get five, six, seven firms that want to be your owner's rep. You're gonna, you and your committee members will be evaluating those, scoring those, shortlisting them, interviewing them, and then selecting a firm.
With our, with our guidance.
With, the purchasing department leads you in that.
Great.
So that's why I'm saying the two to three weeks of bidding really turns into six weeks to where you have a go and a contract for that vendor.
Okay.
You have a calendar on that. That's what I was just looking at. So we have two Board of Selectmen meetings in December. We also have Thanksgiving in between, so I, I have RFPs that are already up there for those meetings, not that that impacts it, but it's, we try to get them in soon because with the holidays, so much can.
Yep, delayed. I understand.
But, and like Sal was saying, we have interviews and your evaluation process, our online procurement software, that is gonna be very helpful, because the submissions will be put through that. You'll get them right away, you can review them. We will have to maybe set, I, we have to set like a target week for interviews and really outline that schedule in the RFPs.
Do you guys have any documents within the town, since this isn't like everyone's, other than mine and yours, first rodeo? Do you guys have anything where it cut and dry says, these are the steps you take? And I know that every job is a little different, but like, in general, okay, you need your owner's rep. Here's what happens. Once you've made your owner's. Once you've made your owner's rep selection, here's your next step, here's what happens. Is there any document in our town that exists like that, that we can learn from?
I can pull together a timeline for you of, of the steps. I'd be happy to do that.
Sal, that would be very helpful.
We've done that before. So we can set some initial dates here again. Once you get your owner's rep on board, you can hammer it down to, you know, it has to be at 1:45 on Tuesday, the 3rd. You can get really, my, mine's going to be a little bit, you know, soft on, on, you know, it's going to be, allow a week for this, allow two weeks for that. And as Lee said, when you get down to the nitty-gritty, scheduling hurt, you know, it's like herding cats. It's, it's hard to schedule a lot of different vendors into a, a short window, especially when the committee, here again, you, you folks are volunteers and it's hard to schedule, also schedule your time. So there, there's, there's a lot of balls in the air when these things happen.
Okay, let's, let's back up real quick. Lee, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, so I just, I wanted to let you know that I've already started, I've set up the bones in Bonfire today. So we, we just really-
Is that the name of the software?
It's Bonfire, yes.
That's your bidding, even in the form? I was going to ask that too.
Okay. So when you say you've set up the bones, again, I'm just curious, where are we pulling the language? Is it from the Dwight School?
That, that will get updated. So what I did was I put in our purchasing requirements. So I've, I've just set up like our template, what I would use, and I would just populate it specific to Dwight.
If I could, and if I could just add on, so you, you guys were talking, you said something like a lot of legal to our lawyer terms, like, so a lot of, a lot of what goes into an RFP document is just boilerplate stuff that, that used to take us a lot of time. And now with this new Bonfire, a lot of, most of that boilerplate stuff is just kind of, we can just set it up. We can, that's what Lee's talking about when she says the bones. And then from there, we need to sort of, we can just focus on a scope of work.
Perfect. Okay, so you don't need anything specific?
Sal, this one would be for you. The owner's rep, they're on for the duration of the project, which is about two years?
Uh, yes, and even, even farther than that because then there's closeout with the state. And what, one of the big things that your owner's rep will do for you is keep track of financials on a very timely basis, actually faster than town finance could keep, keep up with it because there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of things to, they'll, they'll keep pending change order logs or, or logs for you to, to make sure that you have money set aside or you don't spend money on, on one thing when you didn't solve something else that might have been a problem. So for instance, there, there might be, I'll, I'll just say issue one. They might tag a, a guesstimate on it saying, "That might cost us $5,000." They'll hold that against your contingency. And when you go to solve another problem, they're, they're already banking some money because you might have to do that later on. You might be waiting for better pricing. You might be waiting for other information to come through or waiting to hear from groups advocating for or against an item before you spend the money or say, "We're not going to spend that money." So they're, they're really there making sure that you're not overspending your money. They're also there to make sure that there, there's different types of contingencies. There's the owner's contingency. There's also the construction contingency. Construction contingency is money that the CM holds for things that might, is hard to define at the time of contract. So they'll hold some money. So we're, we're getting into the weeds, but your owner's rep is going to be doing a lot of that financials. And all of those financials are needed for state filings for reimbursement. And they're very particular about that.
So how many companies are going to bid on this? And then there's going to be an interview process. You'll want the board to meet with not just the company, the person that they're putting forward to work directly with us and attend the meetings and prioritize what we're thinking about, what we're voting on and deciding on.
Sure. So the, and Adam can, Adam, feel free to jump in. The, the state requirement for, for certain professionals, the owner's rep, the architect, and the construction manager, is that you use a quality-based selection process in that you shortlist to no more than four candidates. Doesn't say that you have to shortlist to four. You can shortlist to three, I believe, Adam, if that's correct. You don't have to go to four. We, I've seen it, and here again, it depends on the economy, it depends on the project. We had, I want to say, dozen years ago on a Fairfield Woods project when that building was added on to, we had something on the order of sixteen architects, architectural firms, put in submissions to be the project architect on that. The building committee, you know, they, they muddled through a lot of them. Sometimes we don't even get four. So it's-
Seeing as this is the most expensive building that Fairfield has ever put forth for public schools, I, I would imagine that will probably be in the upper end of, of those estimates. I, I would-
It, it depends on the market. You know, definitely. Yeah, it depends on the market and the timeline and, and the interest. Yeah, no, there'll definitely be interest in the project. It's a, it's a good project. But-
And I would get forty-some people coming at me for requests for, for bid. And it was a project that was nothing that I thought was going to be big. And then other ones that were massive, I'd be reaching out to people asking, "Are you going to bid this?" It's weird.
Depends on the market.
Depends on the market a lot, yep.
One of the nice, one of the nice sort of, it, it's sort of an ancillary thing with, but with Bonfire, one of the nice new additions is we can actually see who's interested in our projects, which is something we haven't been able to see previously. So if a company, you know, downloads the bid document, we can, we can see that. So it is kind of helpful, almost like reconnaissance for us as we're going through the process.
Okay, now, Bonfire's used by Fairfield, so does that automatically upload, like, is the Dodge Report still there? Is that still part of the Connecticut-based requirement? That it hits the Dodge Report or no? That's old.
I think that still exists, but we, we post everything on Bonfire and then also the State of Connecticut government, yeah.
You do it to DOS.
Yeah, Department of Administrative Services has a portal with just hundreds and thousands of, of vendors that, you know, get alerted when you post bids.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. There was more than one platform it was going to be presented on.
Okay, um, I just want to go back real quick, just, just so that I'm clear, everybody else who's present and online is clear. What we are looking to put forward for the owner's rep document, just to get back to our original item here, is, is we already have the bare bones, as Lee said. We just need to plug it in and then we need to sort of make it go live, right? And then there is a two-week process where it needs to sit out there in the public. And during that time, we could be receiving bids, but we would have to schedule a meeting in which to review all of them at once?
No, we're not.
We can't open them until the two-week process is over, I know. But I'm saying, but the review process, what we're talking about with the grading system with Adam, that would happen at one of our future meetings.
So could I? I was just seeing, can I throw some, and for, for Lee, for the group and for Lee and for Adam, if I throw some specific dates out there, maybe we can fine-tune it from there. So we're sitting at the 28th now. So if we say the 4th, November 4th, is your next meeting and it's Election Day, if we can be ready to sit, hit, go on that, it'll give us, you'll have your meeting on the 4th, you'll kind of review it that, 1 o'clock that day and then go live that afternoon, if that works for Lee and Adam. And then that puts you at the 18th is your final due date in there. And so I would even say the 18th or the 19th. That gives you guys on the 25th, you can shortlist and set up your interview process. I wouldn't say do it before the 25th for interviews because it's the holiday. And then that gives you that first week in December to get your interviews done and award. And then you said the Board of Selection meeting in December is when?
There's one on the 10th and one on the 17th.
So that would line you up. It would make it difficult to get there, but I think if we work with the town-
We would have the 2nd and the 9th to, to review these.
To review these and get a contract done for the town.
So in terms of the contract, now, you know, with a project of this size, maybe this might not work. But one of the things we've also been trying to do more that, that does help streamline things is we're, we have a sort of generic contract document for professional services that the town attorney has reviewed, edited, signed off on. And we've, we've started to include that as a, as an attachment to the RFPs so that bidders can see it, you know, before, earlier in the process. Whereas the way it used to work, the process Sal was describing and how we typically run is, we don't even talk about a contract until an award recommendation is imminent. So now by including it as a, at least a sample as an attachment to the RFP, you know, it's helping to move things along a little quicker.
That's good to know. And, and I think you're interested-
Shooting for the 10th, the Board of Selection meeting on the 10th. From Lee and Adam, feedback, if, if you guys say, "No, you're crazy" or if you think this is doable?
Yeah, so my immediate feedback is, that's a little stressful. I don't know if it's crazy.
Well, I have a question. What, what would happen on the next meeting that isn't happening now? That we have to wait until after the next meeting to approve to post this?
There is nothing, to my knowledge, the only thing that we have out there sort of in the ether, I'm, and, you know, I spoke with Angeles about this, is setting up a tour of Sandy Hook School so that we can see their, their standards. Yes, that it's already been confirmed with the superintendent. They would allow for a tour where our building committee would go and see their safety standards and procedures. Again, I'd, I'd like to just see what is out there. I'm not saying that that is the standard by any stretch of the imagination or that we want to try to achieve that. But we are talking about building a new, modern building, breaking ground hopefully, you know, in 2026. I don't want us to go in with, and I'm sorry to throw this out there, but an all-glass building like for elementary school or now we're, you know, issuing bonds for $3.7 million to add vestibules onto our other existing school.
Can I interrupt here? I, I really am very, 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 very uncomfortable talking about anything related to security at our, at our buildings. This is a public meeting. We should not be talking about this in open session.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question?
But in terms of our schedule, I would like to go see that.
But my thing is, do we need to do that before we post the bid for an owner's rep?
No, we don't.
Okay, that's my only thing right now.
That is all, we, we are talking about what our schedule looks like in the next two weeks. That is the only thing that I'm aware of that.
Just go back to the schedule I was throwing out there. I said on the, I said on the, on the 4th for a review. If you guys are comfortable, I didn't, I was trying to give Lee and Adam a little time to get to the 4th without saying, "All right, we want it done for Monday." I didn't want to do that. I was saying Tuesday was the day into the week. Gives them the rest of this week. Adam's going to kill me afterwards, but gives them the rest of this week and that Monday to-
Stress, Adam, already.
Monday to come back and finish up before they get it posted. If you guys are comfortable with that, I mean, we could ask them if they could post it first thing on the 4th in the morning and then come in here and, in the afternoon and say, "It's posted and done."
Since it is not in our hands, that it's in yours, would you be comfortable with that, with that request? It doesn't necessarily need to happen by that date, but would, would it be possible?
But you don't need to waste that day, is my question. Like, there's nothing me or you could add to this that these two professionals don't already-
That's why I wanted to know where the language was being pulled from and how you construct these documents because, again, this is the first time for, for many of us. And so, the process. Because you're not waiting on us. What are we waiting on?
So what, what I have, like, this, this document right here has, does have, seem to have some just boilerplate or generic language that would be associated for this type of service. So that, I would review this to make sure that it's relevant for this particular project.
I don't see Mill Hill's, real quick. Do we, was there a problem, Angeles, with pulling the Mill Hill owner's rep contract? I, I just, because I had asked for both and I'm not, this is the HVAC upgrade.
Yeah, see HVAC, Adam, I believe, what?
Was Mill Hill, I think for Mill Hill, we might have piggybacked off of-
Hollen Hill?
Earlier, oh, was, no.
With Mill Hill, with Mill Hill Colliers, which was the owner's rep, there was a negotiation off of the Smith Richardson Golf Course owner's rep contract. It was not a separate solicitation.
So it, it's not listed online in any of the backup that I could find in either of the, well, of that billing committee from Mill Hill. And I, and I went through as many minutes and agendas as I could to try to track it down, but I don't see it. So seeing as we don't have another school building owner's rep, and I'm assuming that, as Lee says, that this HVAC, you know-
That's, that's the latest, greatest scope of, scope of work for, for an owner's rep and we can, we can clean that up as it is relevant to the new construction of Dwight Elementary. It, it's not so much exactly what the building ends up doing, it's what they're administering. They're, they're, I don't want to minimize it. They're doing the paperwork and it doesn't matter whether you're building an addition or a new building or putting in equipment. They're still doing the same task, which a lot of them are financial and, and we'll say legal, doing paperwork on change orders, things like that, administrating those things for you.
I understand what, Sal, I understand what they do for us. I just want to be sure that I'm understanding what we are asking in terms of, you know, not just, not just their job, but are, are we giving them the ed specs, for instance? Are we giving them the Spiegel's report? No, none of this comes up yet.
It's all, it's all-
It's all surface.
It's all surface, it's all administrative work. They're, they're doing, they're doing your bookkeeping, your background. It's when we get to architects, engineers, that's when that stuff's really-
And when they'll be consulting on those things, okay.
So I don't know if this RFP, because I, I'm just looking at it for the first time, if there was state reimbursement that was coming as part of this, but anything that the owner's rep is going to have to do or provide to us that we're going to then need to supply to the state, is that going to be part of this RFP as well and part of the instructions?
Well, that's a good question, thank you. Any better?
Yeah, so it will, the RFP will include their requirements for doing their state filings. And again, back to, it's all administrative at that point. And that, we will make sure, because we've done multiple years, multiple projects, that it does specify what their requirements are for those filings to assist with and what steps they need to do.
But they'll actually be filing those for us, not you?
No, I, I actually, I'm actually the person that files with the state. I'm the point person on those actual filings. And I work closely with the owner's rep on the financials that they're keeping track of to make sure that the right stuff is going in, city applications. The, the background of, of state reimbursement is semi, semi-professional, semi-political. So there, there's a little nuance to, to how it's done.
But we just want to make sure that you're getting what you need, Sal, and then-
Yeah.
If I can just add, and maybe if I'm not clear, maybe Sal or Angeles can, or Lee, will pick up what I'm trying to put down. But one of the beauties of an RFP is obviously you want to have as clear and accurate a proposed scope of work as possible. But I, I think what you'll find, we need to give a picture here of what we're looking for. We might later on through the interview process, you know, realize, you know, get, get some refinements of that. And that is acceptable within an RFP process. But I don't want to bore you with purchasing 101, but the, the diff-
I would, I would like for you to bore me with it because this is new to me. And so that's why I'm asking for you and Lee to kind of get a little bit more like, I know that everybody else in the room, you know, Sal, Angeles, Jeff, you know, and, and I'm sure John and Nicole, to a certain extent, are more well-versed in all of this. I, I, and I believe Dina as well. But because I am here and I worked on this for a long time, but I'm, I'm still new to this game, could you please- Could you please just help me understand better what exactly? I, I understand that we plug it all in, we send it off, that's fine. But what is helping us discern what would make a good owner's rep? Just walk me through your grading system maybe, or is, do we need to save that for a later meeting?
Well, I can just briefly go through the RFP, just to explain to you. Because at the end, if you wanted to, at the end, you'll see it's on page nine. And at the top, there'll be review and selection process.
Okay.
So I, I haven't fully read through this myself just yet, but this, this would be kind of generic purchasing information that we would put in the back, like what you would have your criteria, your evaluation criteria of what you're looking at on three of the proposals.
Okay.
And we would have them, the format of the proposal. We try to have them go through in the same sequence that they would for each of them so that it's easier to run through them. So you have your evaluation criteria and then we could set points for each of them. You would be evaluating each. So what I'm going to try to do is see with Bonfire, we have an option where we can have companies respond to different questions. And we can look at that information side by side as opposed to, before we had Bonfire, they were handing in paper submissions where you'd have to look at each submission. But I'm, I'm going to try to see if this would work where you're looking at the screen, they put in their qualifications and you're able to kind of do a side by side comparison.
Like it's stretching?
Yes.
Correct.
It ends up almost being like a zip recruiter, it sounds like, where it's like, oh, I have two years of experience. It's like, yeah, no, sir. I'm sorry.
I know you want to get through these quickly, so that would be helpful. If you could see everything right in front of you and be able to do side by side comparisons.
I think what you're looking for is for criteria. We would commonly look for other, what's your experience with other jobs of this size and this type? Your experience, how long you've been doing this type of service? What is your experience working with the state of Connecticut? Stuff like that to give us a little, give you guys a little bit of their background to see who you feel most comfortable moving forwards with at this time.
Is it allowed that they provide references as we get down to the nitty gritties? Like, hey, we've got six, we want to get down to three. You can make those phone calls to the references.
Absolutely.
Like, it's like hiring a employee, I guess.
Okay. In the selection criteria, they, they have to provide their understanding of the work, any innovative approach you could ask them, what their timeline is, and, and to do, to present similar projects of similar sized towns or cities.
Okay, so we can see their past work.
Thank you, Lee, for. Might be able to find somebody with expertise in the topic that we shall not talk about.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Jeff, I do appreciate you pointing out that that is not open to public discussion.
So I know that in the private sector, we have the ability to look through our relationships and prior things that, and prior experience that we've had with certain vendors. I don't know how that works in the public sector.
Oh, that's actually a very good, I'm curious about that as well. Because I understand that there is a precedent for certain companies that have been owner's rep for past projects. But I, I don't know in terms of, just like locally, I would love to know not just Fairfield's previous.
Like if we've had a bad experience with a, with a vendor, it would be important to know that, to not make the same mistake twice. And I just don't know if we have the ability to even ask that question in the public sector.
Sal, could you shed any light on that?
Sure, so we, we've had, I, I came to the town in 2006 and was batting cleanup on the six large construction projects that they did in the early 2000s. That, that, those projects had an owner's rep and at the time, the company was called Pinnacle One. That company has now called Arcadis. Since we've, since that time, we did a couple of projects without owner's reps, specifically Straffield Elementary and Fairfield Woods.
Without owner's reps at all?
Without owner's reps at all. And I'm going with the large projects. There's, there's other projects, we do roof projects without an owner's rep.
Sure.
You know, there, there's smaller projects and small, I mean, $3 to $5 million and less. But the, the major projects, we'll, we'll say $5 million and more. We skipped owner's reps on those two. It, it became obvious at the end of those that we really needed an owner's rep. So the next project after that was Riverfield. The, the owner's rep on that was SBS, which then became Colliers Engineering Leadership Group. Colliers has been owner's rep on all of the projects except Fairfield Ludlow High School back in 2014, 15, the, the front addition. And that was Arcadis, which they used for two of the three phases. And truthfully, Colliers wins the bids more often than not. And that's just the experience across the past, I'll say, 25 years. Before, before the big projects in the early 2000s, it, it was typically a GC and not a CM delivery style that the town used. And they did not use owner's reps as far as I know back, you know, going back farther than 25 years.
I understand that it's standard practice now. I wanted to understand better as to why, and, and I, I think I can speak frankly here, why we have consistently relied on one firm as opposed to say choosing another. Is it just because we've had good expectations? In which case that would be, that would speak highly, you know, for them.
There's a consistency that, that comes out from having the, the same company. You know, they're, I don't want to say they're employees or near employees, but they have a, a good understanding of our systems. The, the finance department, the purchasing department, Board of Ed departments. And it, there's a lot of background there for, for that company. That does not mean that another firm cannot adequately be an owner's rep on the project. I don't.
I mean, I would like to, I would encourage other firms, of course, to bid. I just want to understand a little bit.
It is open, we, we, the RFP process, any company is open to submit. It's through your review and through your evaluation of each of the submissions that companies are chosen. So, and it depends on how many companies are, you know, we could have, like we were saying earlier, like I know for this HVAC one, we had two companies.
Who, who bet? To be honest.
Submit a proposal.
Well, I would ask, if I was also, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Just also, during this process, once this RFP is posted, there, you cannot have conversations with anybody or engage with any, we don't want vendors reaching out to you directly to ask questions. Everything needs to go through our office.
I appreciate you saying that. I, I was sent a code of ethics and just, you know, standards and procedures. I, I do appreciate that and I would hope that I shouldn't have to say this, but yeah. We are a fair selection process and we are not open to any favors and or bribes. Not, not under my watch. Okay.
Real quick, please.
Yes, Angeles.
During your evaluation process, Sal, myself, we will, we'll be in there with you. And you are always welcome to ask questions during your evaluation. Like, oh, have you ever worked with this company before? Do you know anyone that's worked with it? Positive feedback, negative feedback. We're, we're able to give you that information from our past experiences that is always able to be used as part of your selection process.
Are, are you guys able to pull up the, the backup, the backup material, the, the RFP that we submitted? Because if you go to page nine of that document.
That's what we were just looking at.
Yeah, you can see the selection criteria we used. And to sort of answer the question that was asked, like, no, we can't direct, we can't, we can't promote a, a relationship with one vendor over another. But if, you know, in this one, for example, one of the criteria was, just picking one, the proven ability to submit cost-effective solutions. Well, if one vendor happens to submit as a part of their proposal that they, you know, successfully completed three projects for this town or that town, that's, that's something to consider. But it's just one of several criteria.
Okay.
And I would just also like to just say, when you're evaluating these proposals, it, it works now, it's better through Bonfire now because you have to, you're at your computer, you're going to be looking at these directly. Between the committee members, there's no discussion because it has to be individually evaluated.
It has to be at the table.
And then once your evaluations are in and your scores are all done, then there, a discussion can be had. But it has to be independently rated.
Okay.
Let's keep records in terms of like on the last big projects, like for, for these owner's reps, like cost overrun, like how were the cost overruns? And what were the, the, the change orders and things like that? Because it would be really helpful because obviously it's highly likely that the same people that normally do work for the town are going to bid again. And it'd be good to know, you know, how their performance has been historically.
Do we?
Like, was it an unforeseeable excuse as to why the prices went up? Or was it just, oh, we underbid every single package in the scope? And oh, look at that, that happens every time you do work.
Yeah, well, stuff like that and, you know, how, how were these things handled? Was there, you know, value engineering that was done? Like, was it handled appropriately? And considering we have history with some of these firms, it would be great if we have that kind of information to be able to consider that.
You, you're, you end up with a lot of the same players that show up at the table. You know, if I took a notepad, I probably can tell you five or six architectural firms that will bid this project. Same thing, I can tell you two or three construction managers that would come out to bid this project. It's, you know, they're perennials, they, they keep coming out for these, these types of projects. What, so, and as far as the change orders, your owner's rep will have a good handle on what some of these firms, that they've worked with these firms down the road somewhere else, whether they're, they're, they hold tight and they have low change order propensity or high change order propensity, they can give you feedback on that.
I feel like Lee was trying to finish a sentence like three times now.
No.
I'm sorry. I appreciate everyone wanting to ask questions, I do. But if I, I could ask, including those online, could you please raise your hand or even put it in the chat so that I can call you one at a time? Also, because if we're talking over each other, it's really hard to, anybody listening in or if we're going back, because I'm afraid either Nicole or myself will have to do to produce minutes for this because we don't have minutes for our last one. I just want to be able to keep track of what everyone is saying. So if we could just raise our hands like we're in school and I will call on you. I apologize like a teacher, but Lee, thank you. You have a good word now. I know. Okay, these are good questions. You were talking, maybe we were talking about the timeline in terms of.
Want to review the timeline before we leave? Because I did have to put in there that there is an RFI deadline that, so say, let's say we post the bids on Tuesday, then the companies are given a certain amount of time in which to submit questions. So I put it out a week from.
Oh, submit questions to the RFP before they submit their bid?
Yes, yes, so they're allowed to ask questions, anything that they want clarified.
I do remember this event from the RFP process for the multi-site feasibility study.
Okay. So they, they can ask questions if something's not clear to them. They, so I put down the 11th and then I put down 18th to be the due date, giving the two weeks now. So the evaluation deadline then.
11th being when they can submit their, their questions back?
Now, some companies might submit afterwards, but just depending on if they needed to submit their submission, we would respond to it. But otherwise, we would put a stop date as the 11th. And then I have.
Questions and then the actual due date by the 18th?
By the 18th, correct.
Okay.
Now, all right, so we have Thanksgiving then, the 27th. So they, these would, depending on how many submissions received, they would have to be, when, how long do you think before? We're, we're going to do interviews the week of December 1st, is that what we said before?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, no, is that what we said?
That's what I had said.
That's what Angeles was, was laying forth. And again, I know it's the holidays and I know it's tricky, believe me. We host everyone at my house. They will be coming in and not, not, not eager to leave.
I have a question on the 11th. Do we want to use the 10th instead this way here? If there are questions that we have to discuss as a group, we meet on the 11th.
Can we do that legally? Is that the full two weeks?
I was going to say that. This way it gives you the opportunity to review any questions they have to give back to.
In a sense, the one week thing is arbitrary, so.
It is. Okay, I didn't know if there was any legally binding reason that we needed to have it at a.
No, we try to stay consistent, but this is a little bit of a, you know, extraordinary situation. So we could, we could alter it a little bit.
Okay, so then if we have the 10th as the last day, the 11th to discuss any questions here at the table. However, I'm sorry, the 11th is, is Veterans Day. So the town is closed for all intents and purposes. So that actually throws a little bit of a kink in our plan here. Could we?
I make them do the 12th.
We could do a special meeting off of our regular schedule. And I did sort of discuss this a little bit with the town clerk and Jen Carpenter in the First Selectmen's Office, who's been helping us book space. But if we could potentially meet another day that week, and I guess I could put this out to the rest of the board or those of us present here, would we be comfortable meeting that week on the 12th or the 13th? I believe Peggy was the one, or was it you, Dina, who said that just until the end of this year, you could?
Yeah, I can't, I can't do the 12th. I, I.
You can do Wednesdays, but you could, you said do Thursday.
I can do Thursday, the 13th.
Okay. So if we could potentially meet on the 13th as opposed to the 11th, I just don't want us to lose momentum.
Can I ask, I know we said the 10th Board of Selectmen meeting. Is there any, can we do the 17th? Only, the only reason is because if we're conducting interviews the week of December 1st, you have to conduct those interviews, evaluate those interviews. And then there's a, looking at the contract, it's there, you have your contract negotiation before this goes to the Board of Selectmen. And then that has to be put on the agenda for the, for the 10th. So that's really, that's very, very tight.
That's why I was asking about releasing this sooner. Because it was really like that first few weeks of December. I don't know, how long do these interviews typically take?
I would try to do, we would.
One hour with each firm?
45 minutes, you could do 45 minutes and then have a 15 minute.
And are they, I'm sorry, that's a snarky question. Are they present at each other's interview? Are they, it's not like they're in, in the public.
They can run back to back?
Yeah.
Most likely, I'm guessing nowadays, maybe the, you guys who do this, obviously, do they tend to Zoom in now or does it more face to face? And how many building committee members need to be present to make this cordial?
I have an answer and a, and a question. Sorry, Adam, too. So.
Thank you, Adam, for acknowledging one at a time.
First, first, Zoom versus in person, it's really kind of personal preference for the, for the committee. You know, during COVID, we got much more comfortable doing Zoom and, and we're well, you know, pretty well equipped now to do that. So if, you know, if that is easier for everyone, that's definitely on the table. The other, the question I have though is, and I'm just trying to think of other building committees I've been a part of, if the whole building committee is present for the interviews, does that have any issue? Does that cause any issue with sort of being a, a meeting? Like, I, I don't know.
I believe and I'll confirm, but I do believe they'd have to start a meeting and go into executive session for the interviews.
So that it would be off the record?
Yeah.
Yes, Sal? You're muted, Sal.
The question was how many building committee members you needed for the meeting? It's, the answer is four. And even to make the decision on the bid, if four show up, they're the ones that are making that decision.
So we don't wait till everyone is present in order to make this decision?
If you're having a meeting to evaluate the bids and four committee members show up, you have enough for a quorum? Those four people, the people that show up, make, make the decision for the committee. So, you know, even if it's picking a vendor, it, it is what it is.
Adam, just back to you, did, did you have your? Adam, just back to you, did you have your question and your answer complete? Yeah, okay.
We'll just have to make, we'll just have to make sure that we properly post a meeting, I guess.
So, I'm going to reach out to Betsy Brown, our town clerk, about posting a special meeting. Just going back to our timeline, Lee, since 11th, everything will be closed. If we could potentially have it on the 13th, again, I'll have to make sure the room is available. If not here, potentially back over at 501 Kings Highway East. And that we could set as the date for when we would interview, you know, the potential owner's reps. Correct? Am I off?
No, sorry, you said the 13th, sorry.
13th of November.
Is going to be your next meeting?
No. Fourth is going to be our next meeting.
Fourth is the next meeting. And I'm getting...
And I haven't sent an agenda, and I'm not exactly sure what we'll be discussing, but that'll be forthcoming. I think as this process is rolling along, and because there's multiple parts, I still would like to stick to our weekly meetings. I just think it'll help keep momentum. That's what we said. Yes. Okay, so...
I have a couple of things I would recommend.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move forward with maybe laying out the timeline in a more orderly fashion. If you could help us, Sal, you mentioned earlier that you would sort of do a loose list of the timeline. Yes, go ahead.
I'll do a draft, and I'll send it to you.
That would be great.
So that we can have, we can have an offline discussion or phone calls, and we can, yeah, we could take this offline and develop a timeline so we're not reiterating or...
I think it would just help everybody feel more comfortable because...
Right, I'll work with you to make the timeline.
A precedent online that any of us can find necessarily for how this has worked in the past. And just, it would just be helpful to kind of keep us all in the know of what's expected and what order. Okay.
Right after this meeting, I'll send you the one that was done for Mill Hill, just so you can see.
Oh, fantastic.
Globally, some of the items that may or may not be applicable to this job.
Okay. And then, Lee, back to you. In our timeline, you were requesting, and I understand because of the holidays and everything in between, since we've got the 10th and the 17th, those are the only two more selectman meetings in December. And we may want some time to deliberate, to interview, to maybe go through that grading process with Adam. You think the 17th would be more realistic?
I do.
And that is to propose, just so I'm clear, the contract to the, at the Board of Selectmen meeting in our final selection. And then, from that time, how long, I mean, hopefully it wouldn't take long, how long does it typically take to process? Are we assuming that it's going to be with the holidays, a couple of weeks before we receive it back from them? Like, how long until we can actually start moving forward with business?
Once it's approved, they will approve it, then it goes to Board of Selectmen for a final approval and signature.
Does that have to go through RTM?
The day after. It's now a working contract, so you guys can start working with them.
Well, it just...
It's approved on the 17th, and then I take that document, I send it to the awarded vendor, and I say, this was approved last night at the meeting, please review. If you have any comments or questions, get back to me. I, we can make it clear to each of the companies that we're interviewing what we are looking to do, and we will work to provide that contract, like Adam said before, ahead of time so that they're reviewing anything. If they have any exceptions, we're going to ask them, if you have any exceptions to this contract, give them to us ahead of time. And that's when they hand in their submission. And so then, that date afterwards, so we're pretty much going to know if there's any exceptions there.
So, I said... Could you just give me an example, I'm so sorry, of what an exception? Are we talking about, like, there are restrictions, like, in terms of what we...
Something in terms and conditions that they may not agree with, something that we, and then we might have to go back to attorney peers and say, okay, look, they kind of redlined this, so they don't, they want to change it to this.
They're not comfortable with this, right?
And is this okay with you? And he would either say yes or make his adjustments, send it back to us. So, there could be, we're trying to avoid that after the fact. That's what we're going to try to do beforehand.
Okay.
So, once that contract is approved on the 17th, then I would send it to the awarded company. And if everything looks good on there, and they could turn around and say, oh, yeah, we reviewed this already, and they can read through and send it back with a signature. We have the first select person sign, and...
And then, that's it. Then we're ready to go.
Yeah, and then I would send it back to them.
So, we can present to them on the 17th, and in a absolutely wonderful...
Perfect, perfect.
By end of working day, the morning of the 18th, we're good to start business with them.
But so, back to, back to Sal's original timeline, by Christmas, at least, we would have an idea.
We're going to ask them about insurance requirements, and so we would need their C Y, things like that, so...
Okay, but seeing as now we're talking about, and I know the arbitrary date of December 1st was thrown out there. I'm sorry, this is as I'm following along as a member of the public. In terms of my understanding of the estate reimbursement deadlines, and I did, I had reached out to Lert Charlton for some questions she really directed me to, to Angelus and Sal in terms of the filing and how that is all done. But I just want to be sure that I'm not, we're not setting ourselves for failure by delaying this until the 17th. Anyway, shape or form. Okay. All right, well, thank you for laying out the process and for explaining it to a newbie like me. I don't have this as an agenda item, but I do want to just leave out there for all of our committee members present, does anybody have any further questions? Anything they feel that they haven't had a chance to ask or discuss at this time?
One quick thing just to add, I don't know if we got an answer on this, recording secretary?
Oh, that's a good question.
Do I need to learn how to do this?
Well, maybe we needed to wait until we had a budget, which we do now officially have. And my understanding is that the fee for the recording secretary came out of the actual existing budget, which we did not have until 10:30 last night. Now, we have that, I'm hopeful, and I will follow up with whoever I need to, from the town side or otherwise. But I do believe that we should be afforded the same privilege as every other building committee that I've seen and researched online, which is that we would have someone taking notes for us to produce minutes in a timely fashion. I've even pulled a couple of names that I saw from the HVAC Building Committee. I don't know if they're the same people that they would provide us, but it would be helpful so that we can continue to conduct business at the table without having to keep track of anything. Certainly for votes, I do believe that we need to provide those to the town clerk within 24, 48 hours of our meetings. But in terms of minutes...
Recording a vote is one thing, and the minutes is what, I just don't want to be responsible for something that's so...
We have seven days. But I did, I did look back, and for the first two, you know, meetings for at least the Mill Hill Building Committee, there is no record of minutes. So, I can see an agenda, but I can't see what they discussed. So, as far as I'm concerned, this is sort of process and procedure. Obviously, we've had our organizational discussions. We're still, you know, waiting for someone to step forward, for a vice chair. But either way, I would like to make sure that we're keeping a record of everything we discussed, especially given, hopefully, an aggressive timeline. And again, I'm not trying to rush anything, but I just think a lot of work has been done prior to this point, that it is my understanding this was not the process that has been done ever before. We never had a town working group, you know, $1 million bonded usability study prior to a project actually being approved. It usually happened after the fact. So, here we are now, and I'd just like to make sure that we can move forward. But at a realistic pace, yes. And then, one that does not stress Lee and Adam out as well. So, Adam and Lee, with that being said, are you comfortable with this? And if you're not, if you feel that you need to push back a little bit, I'm open to those discussions. I just would want to, want to know, you know, how we can help support you. And I know that we're not the only building committee in town. But we're the only one with a new, with a new contract charge, yeah, and checkbook. So, I hope that we can, we can get the ball rolling.
We'll get it done. And, you know, I think, I think it's smart to go December 17th, and then, you know, maybe if things go smoothly, we can still push it up. That's not written in stone. And again, this is a, this is a big deal. This is an important contract. But also, just in terms of, just speaking contractually, I think this is probably the simplest contract that we'll deal with. So, I do think that, you know, it'll be pretty easy to get it expedited.
Okay. Well, that's reassuring to hear. Thank you so much, both, for being here, making the time today. I appreciate it.
I had a quick question. We all got a copy of the owner's rep RFP template. Are we supposed to review that, come back when they question their comments? And do we have to approve that at a committee level, or no?
You mean the backup that I asked for, for today's meeting?
No, you previously emailed out to all of us, it was an owner's rep RFP document.
That was not actually from me. The first agenda, just so you're aware, was devised by our facilities committee, by Angelus, and one of the town representatives.
Yeah, so that was just to give you an idea of what was coming up first on the role of what's happening with the group. It wasn't supposed to be anything, just kind of give you an overview of what you're going to be moving forwards with. It wasn't anything to really...
For us to approve.
Approval or anything.
I was a little confused by that, too, John. I appreciate that question. And I had the same question. What are we to do with this now? Do we need to, I actually thought mistakenly that we were the ones to craft the RFP. And I felt like I needed to see at least 10 RFPs before I could feel confident in doing that. And I'm relieved to hear that not only do we not have to do that, but that there is software in place that constructs these. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for asking that question, John. Okay, and before we move along to sort of our end-of-meeting discussion, I just, I'm going to go ahead and motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? All right, Dina, and thank you, and Jeff, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, and you both. All right, thank you so much. Have a good day. And I will send out our, just so we're aware, we are still meeting on the 4th at 1 o'clock in this room. But I will send out our agenda by Friday. Thank you.